Chris, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Heether.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone's received a copy of the minutes from May 9? Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved in second.
Are there any corrections or additions? Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we have a special presentation this evening on the master facility, presentation for the new building locations and on the current school sites.
All right, I'm gonna lead this discussion. We have SHP here if needed, Megan Skanska. I'm gonna stay seated so they can hear what I'm saying in the microphone. I was gonna stand up there and then I've got a little laser here. So Amy, if you could pull up the first school site, that would be awesome. Okay, what you have in front of you here is Pleasant Run Middle, but this is not the correct one. This is the wrong one. I guess we could refer to this while she ups. This is the original site we had planned. As you can, okay, so here's the site I wanna look at. So originally, we had the building down coming off Hamilton Avenue. It was gonna be behind Pleasant Run Elementary where it currently is. And the new location that we've suggested is to move the building up on the football stadium and on the two softball fields that are there behind Pleasant Run Middle School. This gives us several advantages. We can share staff, whether it be classified, custodial, or teaching staff. It accomplishes what we wanted to accomplish when we originally looked at the Lake Gloria site, which was the ability for high school kids to come tutor. We now have the ability for eighth and seventh graders to come help with reading and math for grades K-1, 2, and 3. We also are in the process of doing a traffic study. If this works out like we want, you would see the cars going out this way on Pippin, the bus going out on this side. There is no issue with when the middle school gets out. It currently gets out at 2:20, just like Colrain Middle and White Oak Middle does. The elementary school would dismiss at 3:45 like it currently does. So if the traffic study comes up correct, we could exit onto Pippin Road, basically almost the same amount of students as Pleasant Run Middle currently has, so there's no extra cost there. If you look coming out of the back end of the bus here, that is a road going down to Hamilton Avenue. If we have to use that, that is a possibility. We don't wanna do a whole lot to Hamilton Avenue because if the traffic study shows the wrong thing, then we could have to pay for a middle turning lane. The lucky part for us, when SHP, Megan, and them looked at this, they had the exit going to where the state paid for it, which was a very expensive middle lane that they put in about the last two years. So the advantages are, again, you put this building next to our middle school, we can share staff, custodial, classified, teachers going back and forth, students tutoring, learning community service. You can see where the cars would be and the bus. If you're not familiar, that area right behind the ball fields is a down, steep grade that goes toward Pleasant Run Middle. But the other thing that this also does is it frees up all of the Hamilton Avenue property. As I've said many times, we are trying to build a new Colrain Elementary and a new Colrain Middle School without going back to the voters and asking for extra money. So you would say, how are you gonna do that? Well, we joined the help through OSFC, through the state of Ohio, and if we follow the guidelines that we have put in place for our three new elementaries, we can earn up to $17 million in help credit, a credit that has to be used on new buildings. If we can sell the property at Pleasant Run Elementary off of Hamilton Avenue for a good price, and then also the Struble property, or the Houston Elementary price, we can almost have enough to build a new K-8 building. How is that possible? That's not very much of a building. Well, we were originally looking at a K-8 building, but things have changed drastically over the past year, the past two years. Our enrollment is on a steady decline. We're down 600 students, or $3.6 million we lost for funding this year. Our enrollment is showing that it will continue to go down. It will not rise up. My goal is to get our enrollment to come back up, and we do that by having good buildings, but more importantly, good academics and good programs for our students to participate in. But as we sit right now, our enrollment is on the decline, state funding is not helping us in any way whatsoever, so that is why, if you go back to the right there, sorry, Amy, that area right there can be very valuable if we're able to sell it. It's located next to I-275, it's on Hamilton Avenue, just a valuable piece of property that the school district could, because again, we want what's best for our kids, and our K-8 building is our goal for the Colrain Middle School site. So they will still put a football field down here, they will still put softball fields in place, as you can see with the cars, the bus, and again, the proximity next to the building is the key. The only concern we've had from this side of the district, the northwest side, is Mighty Knights and the junior high football team. Well, the junior high football team will play all its games at Northwest High School starting next year, the Mighty Knights will also, but they still need a practice location. So we will do our best to make sure we don't get in the way of their practice field and make sure they can, we can accommodate them any way we can. Also, remember, we promised that, there was a lot of complaints at the board meetings prior to the levy, the basketball gym floor size at Pleasant Run Middle School is probably the smallest in the state, and I'm gonna say, yeah, it pretty much is. So we wanted a full-size gym in the new building. Now the kids can just walk straight out and straight over instead of getting in a car or a bus and going down the hill. It just makes sense to move it up here.
Where will the softball fields be?
The softball field will be down on the lower section here, around the football field.
So down the hill?
Yeah, down the hill.
Okay.
Yep. Over, they can be over in this area. Wherever we decide to put that field finally, then we can put the fields to match.
On game days?
Yes.
Presumably, there won't be a lot of buses. I mean, I just don't know about the grand, I know the cars look like it's close to the field, but would that bus road that comes out from the right of the bus be accessible? It just might be easier, you know, with aging population.
No, you're exactly right. If we have to put that in, we will make sure there's access over there. But really, this field will only be used for practice. Mighty Knights won't need it anymore. Well, they actually will use it for practice. But softball, and then hopefully, if that field's in good enough shape, maybe some soccer can use it, and so on and so forth. All right, the next site, if you don't mind. Okay, so this is the one that's the game changer. So when we originally went into our master facility plan, our architect was Rolf Lesko. We asked them to check out our current sites to see if schools could be built on the current sites of Pleasant Run Elementary, Struble Elementary, and Taylor Elementary. They came back and said, sure, no problem, actually took pictures of the buildings, put them in place where they were. When they originally came back, Amy, can you go down some, or does it only go right and left? Now, go back, right there, perfect. This is where Rolf originally had the building sitting, behind Struble. This blue line, that's a floodplain, of which they never brought to our attention or made any significant mention of. SHP, Megan Skanska found it within two days of being assigned, our architect and our construction folks. And you can build on a floodplain. It can be very expensive. I think you know what goes into building on a floodplain. Our big concern is these houses right here already have flooding issues when we get a big rain. The last thing we wanna do is bother this area and cause problems over there, and the county has the same concern. So Amy, now if you could scroll up so we could see the building. So in moving the building from there, we now have to move the building to beside Struble. You can see there and there. That is two classrooms on each wing that extends out. Those two classrooms this summer will have to be demolished. Those classrooms will be displaced somewhere else in the building, or we will have to put trailers to help accommodate what we need to do. My biggest concern, as all of you know, especially our high school kids, when you were in elementary, you all wanted a playground. We have now successfully taken their entire playground. So we have to find somewhere in this area, this area, and this area to make a playground. We have to make additional parking, and we have to do our traffic study, which is the big part. So I also wanna say, when we asked Rolf Lesko to do our master facility plan, a traffic study was not performed. I can also say, on behalf of the county, when they put the retirement center back there for CMCA, they did not do a traffic study. They knew we were building our building, they did not do a traffic study to see how the traffic study with the school would match with the county. Just to make sure you folks understand, they're closing off John Rose off of Colrain Avenue. So by closing that out, you only have an exit route down John Rose. Is that Smiley, that road? I can't remember the name of the road, but anyway, that goes to Banning.
Memory lane.
Memory lanes. So, yeah, here's John Rose here, and then there's memory lane. So the other option we're looking at, to help with the traffic study, is this right here. Well, that bridge has to go over that floodplain, which was never brought to our attention. What we thought was gonna run around 150 could run anywhere from $250,000 to $500,000. After we do the traffic study, if the traffic study comes back bad or negative, we might have to put a center turning lane in on Banning Road, because what the traffic study will look at is, now Colrain Avenue cannot turn left on the John Rose, they must go up the Banning. When they turn left on Banning, there's only one way to go into Struble Elementary. So to say the least, I'm disappointed in what they put together for the master facility presentation that Andrew and I went out and talked about with everyone, but I am very thankful that within two days, Pete, Evan, SHP, all their workers, found it out immediately, brought it to our attention, and then had a significant amount of meetings, if you could lower it back down, to put the building in this location. It is a flat area. We met with the staff Friday to give them a heads up at Struble, this is what's happening. They're very flexible. If you've been down to the Red Stadium at the Holy Grail, you'll see construction on the apartments across the street. There'll be a cover that'll go over there, so we have access to go out and go under and get to our playgrounds. Now, parking, and with all these schools, if we're gonna build new schools, there's gonna be problems on grandparents' day. There's gonna be problem on concert nights. We have a state-of-the-art auditorium at Colrain High School and Northwest High School that we need to get these elementaries into. So we might have to move some venues for two years just to get us where we need. And understand, once this building's built, that last summer, unless I'm misspeaking, Mike and Evan and you guys, then we have to demolish this building quickly and put in the parking lots for the buses and the cars. So it'll be a very busy summer once that occurs. We are still aiming at August 2018 for the opening. They have told us they would like to have administrators transitioning into the new building and secretaries in May of 2018. Any questions about the Struble site? And the last slide.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead, Michael.
What were you starting to say about a cover and a playground?
Okay, you know where they're gonna tear down these two wings?
Oh, yeah.
They're still gonna have exits out of there because of fire drills, so on and so forth. So that's where it'll be.
Okay.
All right, and then the last slide is of Taylor. Originally, Taylor was gonna be in this wooded area over here, and we have now decided to move the building over here because it just places better because of the flatness of the surface. The one issue that this causes, the great issue is it keeps parking for staff open, keeps this parking here, because I've been told in previous jobs with SHP, Megan, and Skanska, that they can sometimes build 12 feet from another building as they start to go up with construction. So the great thing is, we have our parking facilities. What happens here, I'm concerned about the community, you lose your two softball fields, so we'll try to do as best as we can to come up with an area for them to participate, but for a year and a half, it just may not be possible. So we'll do our best. But really, the move of the Taylor building, it just makes more sense. And the one thing SHP asked me to tell you, this is just a example of a building. It's not a square building, it's a block. I wanna be very clear about this. This is just the location of the building. It is not that square, and so on and so forth, so. But these are the changes in locations. We obviously did not do due diligence with our other architects, Rolf and Lesko. I think they pretty much just placed them in an area that they found open. How you do not know about the floodplain and some of the other issues, I think it says a lot. So wanted to bring these three site changes to your attention. We can make them all work. I'm very comfortable and secure in all of them, but when folks wondered why, we tried to go to different areas for Struble, we started seeing things that were not kosher with us. But it's gonna work. We can make it work. Our kids will be safe, which is our number one concern, and we'll have a great building when it's all said and done. Yes?
To build the trail out of the bus area, that backside onto, what's that, Morlanda, I think it is?
Yes.
Is that gonna require the demolition of a house?
I'm gonna leave this to Chris and them.
That's just the possibility, the future, if that property ever did become available, get you another exit off the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for you guys? All right, I appreciate it. Just wanna get you up to date, and as we find out more, I'll let you know more.
Just want to thank SHP for coming up with these solutions so quickly. Very disappointed in our other architects. So clearly, this just shows, we definitely made the right decision in moving forward. So looking forward, this is all gonna be very, very exciting. We'll go now to Michael with the legislative update.
Thank you. We have two newsworthy items coming from Columbus. One is that the state has a new superintendent, new state superintendent of public instruction will be starting, I believe, on July 1st, and that's Paulo Di Maria, who worked in the Department of Education about 10 years ago. He's associate superintendent, did a lot of school funding matters and budgetary things. He went and did kind of the same thing for the Board of Regents, so he has experience on both sides, and obviously, the two areas we see in College Credit Plus are starting to work together. He did some consulting in private sector for a while. I don't know him personally, but I do know people who know him, and they've all said, you know, great things about him. He's not, he's gonna come in and really be a steady manager that's going to put the agency, and hopefully, you know, by extension, all of Ohio on a more consistent and less yo-yo footing that we've been having lately, you know, in terms of policy changes and whatnot. And then also, speaking of, there's legislations also moving forward that's going to potentially impact, and it's in the discussion stages, so I can't say it's gonna impact us positively or negatively. College Credit Plus funding, they're really trying to find a good balance. There's been issues. You know, they're really looking for, I sort of call it the Goldilocks formula, where it's just right for everybody. Some is too hot and some is too cold, and, you know, on some ends of it, the higher education sector thinks they're getting short end of the stick, and sometimes the K-12 sector thinks they're getting short end of the stick. So it's trying to come up with something that works for everybody is the goal there. So that's the second part of my update.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Okay, Jim, Butler Tech update?
Yeah, just one thing. Back in the state when they passed their budget for the higher ed learning, Butler Tech received through Senator Coley, who pushed for this, a million dollars. And what this million dollars is for is for, you have to build something onto your building. And in Butler County, Cincinnati State is the one that has the, they got the political backing, so they're the ones, anything in Butler County, the money comes from higher ed through the state of Ohio, you have to partner with Cincinnati State. So we, there's, we got $500,000 sitting out there for Phase 2 for the Bioscience Building, which is up at Cincinnati Dayton Road and I-75. Just to give you a little background, there's 269 students. They're full. Actually, Northwest District has the most students from any of our 10 associate districts. There's 57 of our kids there. So we're looking at about a million and a half dollars that we're in discussion about to build on to the Bioscience Building. Preliminary, they're looking at putting a second story on the administrative part of the school, so, you know, it would have a, you know, effect on our kids that are using the Bioscience. So I'll give you guys an update once we get down the road on that, to access the money. That's it.
That's a nice representation from our district, that many kids.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move into reports from employee organizations. Do we have anybody from certificated and licensed employees? Report from school-related organizations. At this time, we'll move into community communications. I have a request from three people to speak. I believe they're all on the same topic, music education. We'll ask Randy Moore to come up first, and if we can limit to about three, four minutes with each.
Right over here to the podium. Sorry, first one.
That's okay.
All right, well, my name's Randy Moore. I'm the parent of a Corian high school student who will be a senior next year. And the main reason I'm here is just, obviously, you guys know, all the music changes, and as a parent, I'm not 100% sure on everything that we've heard, whether or not it's true or what's going down or that, so I'm not gonna, you know, throw stones or anything. I just, I'm here, we got the students represented, we've got parents, just here to let you know, you know, the community based on what we've heard. We back our students and we back the music program at Colrain and at White Oak Middle School. And I understand there's gonna be a meeting Wednesday night, I'm not sure if the board members are gonna be there or not, but we're just here to kind of express our concerns that, you know, we just wanna make sure that the changes you guys are proposing to make, we've heard all, a lot of the things that you guys are proposing that are gonna help the students, and I just hope that you guys are really thinking back on how some of these changes might also hurt some of the students. And like I said, just a lot of hearsay, I don't know if it's true, but I've heard the proposal is to have pretty much three music teachers at the high school, as well as three music teachers at middle school, White Oak Middle School. So that's 700 students at the middle school, 2,200 students at the high school. Fine arts credits are required, credit for students to graduate. We just fear that, you know, moving down to three teachers for every program at the high school, there may be some students, because of the least amount of teachers, obviously, the classroom sizes are gonna have to be minimized, which we fear that some students are either gonna be turned away and not have that opportunity to get the fine arts credit. And there's also just, there's so much invested from the parents, the volunteers, and all that stuff. We just kind of felt that it was like a last-minute notification, and as a taxpayer, as a voter, we pay our student fees, all this stuff, we kind of just felt like it was kind of secretive, the moves, like nobody was notified, it just kind of came out. And again, you know, this is all, some of it's based on hearsay, so I don't wanna, you know, throw everything out there, but I just, my main, my main concern is just to make sure that we're here to help the students and not just hurt the students. I've heard there's a proposed change to change the class schedule at White Oak Middle to the class, how they do it at Pleasant Run Middle. I don't know if that's true or not, but I just, based on some research that I've done, you know, and based on grade reports and report cards and stuff, it's just, like I said, I just wanna make sure that the changes you guys are proposing to make are honestly, you know, to help the students, and I just hope that, and I'll be there Wednesday, so I'll throw more questions out Wednesday, I don't wanna take too much of your time. I just really hope that you guys can sit back before you finalize any decisions, and maybe hear from some of the parents and some of the students on Wednesday as to kind of just how we feel. I just wanna make sure you guys are open to any kind of communication from students and parents as to just how we feel about what we've heard, and, you know, hopefully, some of the things we heard aren't true, we're just gonna say that now, and if they are, you know, I just hope that there's a way we could somehow change some things or stop some of the things from going on. So with that being said, I'm not a great public speaker, so I apologize for the nervousness.
You've done great.
But again, I'm just here looking out for the best interest of the students. My son's been involved in the music program, he's been involved in the athletics program, so I'm just here speaking, and for everybody in general that's involved in the music program, so I just wanna make sure that we have the best interest is for the students. So thanks for your time, and I'll see you on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Now we have, is it Mica Price?
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, report, students, parents, teachers, friends back there, hi. So, thank you, Mr. Moore, for addressing some of our concerns. I'd like to talk a little bit about my involvement in Corian High School music education, and being a part of that over the years. So, sorry. So as a member of the class of 2015 of Corian High School, I'm a third-generation high school graduate from Corian. I am a community member lifelong. I attended Montford Heights Elementary, White Oak Middle School, and I'm now a taxpayer, which is nice. So I'll try to keep my remarks as brief as possible, but I respectfully submit to you tonight that we are all here because we care about the students in our district. We're here because we care about our local schools, and we're here because we care about the strong community that we've worked hard to create over the years. A community that seeks to protect itself at the first sign of anything that sees as detrimental to people. We're here because in 2013, when a school levy, that was the deciding factor between us enjoying the things that we had worked to build and locking the doors at every day at 3:00 PM, we refused to accept that we would have anything less than the things that we had worked for. We faced recession in 2000s, in the late 2000s, and we rallied to protect the state of our community, and we became stronger. In the past couple of years, I've seen new life in the faces and in the efforts of the people of this community. That's why we're here, to protect the community and to protect the kids. But let me tell you why I'm here. Because without that community, I would not be here with you this evening. Without the sanctuary of a community centered around dedication to our schools, I wouldn't be here today. I would have actually been that kid who just walked silently through the halls of Montford Heights, of White Oak, of Colrain. I would've walked those halls being that kid that you've never really talked to. I would've been that kid with no friends, you know, the one who just sort of muddled through, and to be quite honest with you, I would've been that kid who shot himself and got a page in the back of his yearbook. You know, so I think that this is just really important. This is not how I planned this to go. But let me tell you why I'm here and not there. Let me tell you why I'm me and not that kid. Simply put, I was afforded that the, I was afforded certain opportunities that the kids in the back here tonight are in danger of losing. I was given this chance to learn skills that I could use in the real world, the motivation to go on, the desire to contribute to something greater than myself, to a community that actually cares. And today, you know, I'd like to think I'm a functioning adult. At least, I'd like to think that. I'm a rising sophomore at Xavier, Xavier University. You know, there were people that I worked with for four years in different ensembles at Colrain, who were out there making careers for themselves, and they're out there making a difference in society. And we survived because we were given the opportunity to. I was given the gift of music education from fine educators who deserve nothing short of the utmost respect. These kids deserve the same chance to contribute, to learn, and to live as I did. They deserve the chance to explore where they feel at home and not be restricted from that because a class is just too full. They deserve to not feel like an afterthought. They deserve not to be neglected because there aren't enough teachers to teach them. And they deserve not to be shuttled to a meeting in an auditorium on a Wednesday. An auditorium that we have given every inch of ourselves in. I'm telling you this tonight because the things that I experienced in high school, the joys of the memories that I have, I know that you have it too, because I know you remember being in high school, and I know you remember the things that mattered to you and the people that you cared about, and the really honest family that you develop with the people around you. So I know it might be kind of hard for you to remember, but I want you to think about this. Maybe go home tonight and look at your high school yearbook, and think about the people that you spent time with, and how much they mattered to you, and how much what you did mattered to you. And then, when you're looking at that yearbook, think about what would've happened if someone had said, "We just don't have the funding to pay for the teacher that would allow you to do that." And then think about, you know, where are the kids who are gonna be freshmen at Corian next year, in five years, in 10 years? Where are they going to be a year after graduation because they didn't have specific... Where are they going to be a year after graduation because they didn't have a specific program? Because they weren't afforded an opportunity that I was afforded to really just find your place in the world? So that's not exactly how I wanted that to go, but thank you.
Thank you. Austin Malard.
I would like to open by thanking the board for allowing me to speak today. On Thursday, May 19th, the members of the Corinne High School Musical Organization were informed that our concert may be Mr. Boyes and Mr. Greenwood's last at Corinne High School. This was news that struck all of us emotionally, and it hurt us a lot. From what we are allowed to know, the reasoning for this is that the district is making educational initiatives, educational initiatives, to maximize their effectiveness, but in reality, it's just going to be detrimental to the school band programs and the music programs with Miss Parks and maybe even the orchestra of the middle schools with Miss Jackson. We were warned not to come to this meeting today. We were told that we should not come and that we should come to the meeting on Wednesday, but I feel as though our opinions needed to be voiced today in front of the entire board. William Arthur Wood once said, "Mediocre music teachers tell, good music teachers demonstrate, superior music teachers explain, but great music teachers inspire." I feel that Mr. Wood was accurate in this, but I feel like he didn't know music teachers like Miss Parks and Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Boyes. They go beyond just inspiring us in the classroom. They make us better people, they make us better musicians, and they've become like family. I've known Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Boyes for almost six years. I've been in the marching band since I was in eighth grade, and I don't know where my life would be if I hadn't met them when I had and had the opportunities that I've had. Now, I know that there's a chance that us being here and that everything we say may not change any opinions and it may not even matter, which I know that the students do matter, but like I said, I believe this just needs to be said. And I just want you guys to know that a decision that may look great on paper may not be great in reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to personally take a moment to thank all three of you for speaking. And for Randy, you sure couldn't tell that you were nervous, you're a great public speaker. And to both students, I highly respect that you are here and voice your opinion, you can tell your passion. There's a lot of misconceptions, and that's why there is going to be a meeting to explain what's going on. But tonight, I'm going to have Darryl Yater, our Assistant Superintendent, address some of these issues now.
I'm going to go first before we get started. First of all, you might have to turn it off. You are always welcome to our board meetings. You never have to not attend. These board meetings are about you as students, so please don't ever have that perception at any time about anything if you would like to speak about the Northwest Local School District. First of all, I commend you for your professionalism, your ability to make a stance as a team united, and for the parents in your support of coming with them here tonight. This, on the other hand, has nothing to do with us wanting to cut programs. We want to enhance programs. I can tell you, as a former principal of Northwest High School, I wanted a show cards at Northwest High School. My exact words to the person we hired was, "Go live with the Parks, suck the blood out of them, find out what they eat, sleep, and drink, and make sure we dag on have that at Northwest High School." So the amount of time and the effort that you folks put in, parents, students, it is not underestimated. I fully understand what show cards means to you, I fully understand what it means to this district, and so does Darryl and the rest of us sitting up here, and so does the board member. We have board members who've had daughters on show cards. It is very important to all of us. But there is some misinformation out there. This is a business meeting tonight, but we are just trying to say some things tonight, so Darryl's going to give you a short, brief explanation. And then Wednesday night, we will give you time to ask any questions, and we will be there in front of you as long as we need to be. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Darryl.
I'll echo what Pam and what Todd said in terms of the value of the arts. We value music education, we value all art education as a robust part of what we do as an educational entity and what it provides to our students. And the parents, the recent graduate, and the current student articulated very well why music education is so important to what we do. As a district, you know, we are responding to changing enrollment, course requests, staffing. What we are not doing is trying to cut or diminish or reduce the programming that we offer. So currently, at Corinne High School, we have 13 classes that are music classes that are offered throughout the schedule of the course of the day right now. We have about six teachers who come in and out of that building through various parts of their day because they're assigned to other buildings throughout the district. Through looking at our elementary, middle, and high school music programming in a way to try to strengthen that, we did try to reduce the amount of travel to maximize the amount of staff that we had in the building that could really support and maintain the quality programings that we currently have. With what we are allocating to Corinne High School next year, they have the ability to actually schedule up to 18 courses, which means they could expand the number of courses that they have. They could take some of the courses and break them into sectionals versus groups together, so there's more specially-designed instruction around specific music education to enhance and build the programs. We have, we've met with all of our music educators district-wide in April because we want to support their ability to build a strong cohesive program. So we worked with them to develop a series of stipends, music assistant, music leader, and music specialist, that are tiered in terms of their level of specificity and their ability to work with students on specific skills. And at that point, we told all of our music teachers that they have access to request that. So if a chorus teacher needs support with developing a soprano voice, they could call us and say, "I need support," and we would, you know, allow them to hire a music assistant, leader, or specialist based on the need they have to come in and work with their program to build it, develop it, and take it to the next level, because we are committed to building and developing the programs and not diminishing them. We have early releases in the district. We've already told them that because of the need to develop a comprehensive approach to the music, as we've been listening to our music teachers, that we need to develop a very strong cohesive program, K-12. And we need to work more closely with the teachers to develop expectations for elementary music, middle school music, and high school music, so they feed naturally into each other and there's not any disruption in terms of what the students are learning. And by building a stronger middle school program with some of the expertise from our high school folks, we're going to be able to build a stronger feeder system, so students who are coming into the high school are going to have a stronger skill set and hopefully have more students who are interested in the arts because of the experience they get in the middle school, so they're not waiting till the high school to get involved in something that's going to give them that protective supportive community. So we're trying to build and strengthen an entire K-12 continuum by being able to address some of those needs district-wide. With the staffing, we have listened to the teachers. So I know someone brought up the idea of Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Boyes' last concert. They are assistant directors. It has nothing to do with their assignment during the school day. It's their supplemental they have that is after school that allows them to be that assistant director. You know, we have been having conversations with some of the music teachers in terms of Miss Jackson and Mr. Greenwood and some of the orchestra pieces, and we've been listening to that and adjusting as we go to allow them to be able to maintain that level of expertise to develop and build the orchestra and music program. So we've been trying to build a continuous K-12 program of music excellence and education, and we believe that some of the changes we made are going to continue to build that, not diminish it because of the supports that we're adding to it, not taking away. And Wednesday, we are meeting at Corinne High School at 6:30, and we would invite all of you to come back and ask specific questions, contact me, contact Todd, we're willing to talk, any of the board members, to address specific concerns that you have, because we value music education as much as you do, and we want to build this program together.
I also would like to let you know that it's been very difficult to replace the Parks. As you know, they have resigned from show cards. They're retiring, and they've earned it. They've done a great job. It's been very difficult. We wanted somebody internally, because if we found somebody internally, they could go to the high school, take over the six bells of teaching, the one bell of planning, go into it. Nobody in the district wanted to do it. I don't know if that's trying to stay with the greatness that is intimidating for some, but we've also are in negotiations and talking to Kevin Kane, who is in our audience tonight, about upping the stipend for show cards, so we can get a better quality person. We're not taking money away, we're actually putting more money into it. And when you have a $60,000 budget for stipends to use to help out our kids in our district, that's a large stipend, and an overall band budget of $122,000, and that has nothing to do with all the teachers and anything else. So we're not trying to cut you. I think some emotional pleas have come from our teachers, who I respect because their blood, guts, and soul is in everything they do, and they obviously have translated that to you and how you're leading your life for graduates and some others. But we are doing the best we can, we can. At Northwest, I was scared to death when Annala Teary left, but you know, Sam's come in, and he's doing a great job, and we have not missed a beat. We won't replace the Parks, we'll try to equal them, try to get somebody as good and get you and keep you at top-notch. The last thing we want is for you to go down in ability or in learning or in service to our community. But we will work hard to do what we can, we have been. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. We will again try to clarify that on Wednesday night. If you can't attend, feel free to ask. We're going to try to put a handout together prior to you coming in the door that night, so you can see some of the facts on paper, and then we'll continue to answer questions as needed.
And again, just to reiterate, please know you are always welcome to a board meeting. The difference right now is we will move on to more business, but Wednesday night is set up. It'll be a dialogue, back-and-forth, question and answer, and please know that we support all the arts, and we're not going to step back and let anything go down. It is going to be a challenge to get new show choir directors, but I know everybody's doing everything they can to try to recruit, to try to find the right people to get and put in that position. So with that, we will move on to, Todd?
Yes, this would be the chance, unless you want to hear the business, you're more than welcome to stay, but it's up to you. The next item is a fiscal item. It is the financial reports of the treasurer. In accordance with Section 3313.29 of the Higher Revised Code of the State of Ohio, record needs to be made that the treasurer submitted a financial statement of receipts, expenditures, balances, and investments in the regular funds of the Board of Education for the period of the fiscal year 2016. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
It's been moved in second. Are there any other questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a certificated licensed personnel item. It is retirements and resignations. You will find five acceptance of certificated resignations, two acceptance of tutor procedural resignations, five acceptance of extra-duty resignations, and three acceptance of extra-duty procedural resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a classified personnel action item. It is retirements and resignations. You will find two acceptance of classified resignations, six acceptance of classified substitute procedural resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
In compliance with ORC 3313.33, attached is a list of four vendor contracts requiring board authorization. Superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the vendor contracts as listed.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions on the vendor contracts? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a fiscal item. It's info action. It is temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2017. To pass a temporary resolution for meeting the ordinary expenses of the district until the effective date of the annual appropriations resolution. Amy, anything you'd like to add?
These are just our building and department budgets that have been approved through the superintendent for next year.
Is this something that you have to get to the tax commission or the budget commission or something before July?
Yes, and so that we can process payments before the annual appropriation by October 1st.
Okay, move on.
Oh, I'm sorry. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education. Oh, we got to go back, Lynn.
I thought that is...
Have you turned cruise off somehow?
Oh, that, I mean, my screen isn't, is not matching that.
You took your cruise off.
I'm on temporary appropriations. I was before, too.
The cruise is off, and maybe you can switch it on, but I usually have to log out and log back in.
Okay, sorry, I guess I'm logging out, because I'm on the right screen.
It's the cruise function.
How did that?
Let's just make it.
I mean, I didn't...
I got it.
Wait a minute, I got to get back in now.
Technology was a big conversation at 21st Century.
Look, it's off again. I'm on, I'm on the temporary appropriations.
It says info action, it just didn't pick up on the action item.
Okay, so we'll just vote by paper. Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Superintendent and treasurer recommend the temporary appropriations for the fiscal year 2017.
Moved in second. Do you want to call each name?
Mr. Harlow?
Yes.
Mr. Yater?
Hi.
Mrs. Desol?
Hi.
Hi.
I changed mine to an "I."
Okay, I'm going to, my cruise is off again, let's see.
The next item is a fiscal item for action. It is then-announced certificates over $3,000. You will find five then-announced certificates. Superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the payments over $3,000 requiring a then-announced certificate as listed.
Moved in second. Any questions? We'll call for the vote before this thing goes off again. Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a fiscal info action item, and Amy Wells will present the five-year forecast and related assumptions.
October, we do the five-year forecast, and we've been trending and projecting that and watching how we're coming in actual versus projections every single month throughout the year. And in May, the board is required to present an update to the Department of Education, so tonight, we're going to review our update, updated forecast that we're going to submit on your approval tonight. Give you a refresher on our revenues. Forty-six percent of our income comes from our property taxes, local property taxes, and 33% is from the state foundation. Rest of the income comes from restricted grants, property tax allocation, those are those tax credits that we receive from the state of Ohio, and other revenues, included in other revenues are tip payments, the green township tip, interest, tuition, items like that. On our expenditure side, 54% of our expenses are for personnel or salaries, with 21% on the benefits side, retirement, health insurance, things like that. So 75% of our expenses as a service organization are in our personnel, in our people. An additional 20% is in our purchased services. That's utilities, special education needs. Well, we have 3% in supplies. So if you think of the classroom materials and supplies, transportation supplies, you know, 3% of our overall budget is in our actual supplies, custodial supplies, 1% in capital outlay, and that's because we do have the permanent improvement fund where our buses, technology, and maintenance are out of the permanent improvement fund. So this was a recap for how our year is looking. And this is the slide I mainly wanted to focus on. This shows the blue is our revenue, the red is our expenditures, and the green line is our cash balance. We've been trending with our revenue increasing as our, and our expenditures were flat versus cuts, recession time, and then as we've been increasing salaries, they're going to start to go back up as other expenses, cost of living type expenses. But remember also in this revenue was $5 million from the emergency levy that we kind of replaced with our building bonds. So we will no longer be receiving that, and that is gone out of this current year of '16. And through fiscal management, we have found a way to look for efficiencies in our operations and get our expenditures to come in line with our revenue. And we will continue to do that as we go forward over the next five years of the forecast, always looking for efficiencies and ways that we can bring our expenditures down more in line with our revenue. But as you can see, in 2018, the $7.3 million emergency levy is set to go away if we do not renew it. So the orange boxes are the renewal of the emergency levy where it currently is at, at the $7.3 million. Without that emergency levy, we are looking at significant efficiencies to find or possible cuts to the district in order to bring our expenditures in line with our revenue. Our tax valuations are flat with very slight increases. We do have an update in 2017, but everything we're hearing from the county, there's not a big increase coming at this time. State revenue is flat or decreasing, as Todd has mentioned, with our student enrollment going down, our state revenue is going down. And then also the way this state funding formula currently works, and again, state funding formulas can change every two years for getting ready to get into the second year of the biennial budget, but with the way the current funding formula works, as you lose students, the state considers you wealthier, and you also lose state revenue.
Because it's per student. It's dollars per student, so the denominator changes.
So it's kind of a double whammy when you're losing students. You're not only losing the stu, per pupil revenue per student, but then you also lose percentage-wise what you get on all your students. So you're taking the hit by the students leaving and percentage of the rest of your students that you still have. The green line is our revenue. Now remember, we spent $10 million to, we restricted that to go into the building project, and on the forecast, that is budget reserved for when we will move it over. And then we also have a 25% cash reserve when we were going through Moody's and trying to keep up our AAA bond rating. We're looking for 25% of about three months' worth of expenditures to have on hand, and that would be around $22 million, and at the end of year five, we're down to around $16 million. But as we continue to look for efficiencies and cost savings measures, we should be able to hopefully reduce these expenditures down and bring that cash balance back up towards the $22 million that we need to have.
Amy, in 2018, when we opened these buildings, should there not be some efficiency ratings captured there?
We should see some with staffing. We're looking to see if we can just work that through as turnover and maybe just not replacing, but right now I don't have the actual costs incorporated, so we will be able to...
The other concern would be air conditioning in the new buildings will be more costly.
Increase in cost. But we also have a control system to be able to be more efficient on just the overall utilities and try to look for efficiencies that way. Looking to look for efficiencies and maybe the way we do our processes and procedures. I mean, there are things to look at, and we continually are looking every day, even conversations this evening on the cost of traveling teachers versus just being with the students and in the classroom are more efficiencies. So we are continually looking for things and opportunities, and we will vet those out, but we should be able to hopefully close this gap. But without that renewal on the emergency levy, you can see that that's a large gap to try to...
It's imperative we pass that renewal levy.
Absolutely.
Or there will be massive cuts.
There's going to be significant changes. What has to be cut and everything we have not started to discuss right now, we need to start discussing whether or not we want to have a renewal on the emergency levy, which we need. We're currently operating with that $7.3 million today, and we need to continue to bring in that revenue in order to continue operations as we currently have them, and still need to implement efficiencies and cost savings with our current operations.
The worst thing we could do is build all these beautiful buildings and then have to make desperate cuts to the education process. So I mean, it's imperative that we get that levy passed, and still need to keep watching, like you said, to keep our expenditures down. I hadn't left with any other questions as far as the forecast. If you approve tonight, it will be filed with the...
I just have one question going to the forecast, this right, well, it's PDF, but the one you put together, the forecast page. And it looks, you know, great. I know how much work treasurer's put into this. It's just really outstanding. I, I see that the top line, the general property tax, you're forecasting a slight decrease. Is that just for the sake of prudence?
No. Remember that a renewal is at the bottom because it has not been passed yet.
Okay.
Proposing the renewal, so that revenue for the renewal is at the bottom of the forecast and not at the top.
Is that where all other operating revenues comes in?
The top is where it's already been passed and collecting on.
Okay.
In '18, '19, and '20. That will be when the renewal would happen. So the revenue for that renewal is down in line 11.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's like the 7.4...
Correct.
Okay. So, okay, it's the other property tax. It's the historic property tax that we don't renew, the inside mileage and whatnot, that you're forecasting a slight decrease because I'm looking at the top line, 1.01.
1.01 is our general property taxes, which those include the emergency levies.
Okay. Okay. I'm just seeing a slight decrease forecasted, which is fine, it's probably a prudent thing to do, where it goes from 39 to 38 to 36 to 33 to another 33. Is that, is that, are we expecting the...
Well, it's twofold. One, we have an update, so as revenues, tax revenues would go up, but then take the emergency levy out.
Ah, okay, okay. Thank you.
And delete efficiencies.
Amy, regarding charter schools and kids that are homeschooled, I know Todd, you gave us the numbers either last meeting or the meeting before, but could you refresh our memory on how many kids we're not getting money from because of the homeschooling and the charter schooling?
Just charter schools or open enrollment scholarships and everything. We lose about $2 million each for open enrollment out, community schools and scholarships. So we're on $6 million a year that we are losing to other entities for our students that are no longer in our district. And we receive 33% from the state, but we lose 100% when those students go somewhere else. They take the tax dollars and the state.
But with homeschooling, how does that work?
We don't, we don't pay for homeschooling. So homeschooling, the property owner pays for property taxes. We do not pay property owners.
If somebody became a homeschooler, it would cost us a little bit in our head count, but not as much as when they go to charter school, they get a few percent.
We would lose a 33% on the state plan if they were ours and then started homeschooling, but if they were never ours...
You got a question for Todd? With the open enrollment, how many kids are we actually losing each year that are going for open enrollment? I mean, have we looked at, why haven't we gone to that? I noticed that Fairfield does it, Woods...
Everybody who borders us basically does open enrollment.
Around 200.
200 kids. That's $6,000.
Why haven't we looked at that? Or what's the holdup of...
We have just started as a central office team to have those discussions, so when we get to our summer meetings, that's what we're going to be bringing to you, to start having those discussions.
And once you decide, say, say you decide to do it, how long does that take to implement that?
If we would talk about it and get it approved in the fall, we could start that next school year.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because you're losing 200 kids at 70, what is it, 70 or 5600 dollars?
About $6,000. $6,000.
$6,000 is what you get.
And I don't want to scare parents off. You set limitations on who can open enroll. If you, if you know your third grade across the district is already sitting at 27 per class, you tap, you lock it out so they're not, we're not allowed to accept open enrollment there. So it just depends on our enrollment, where the areas are. Most of it's going to start falling into the high school. I mean, it's phenomenal to me, all these kids going to Butler Tech. It's another pathway to graduation, but Amy cringes and, because she knows what it does for her funding, and she's exactly right. We lose a lot of funding.
College credit plus.
College credit plus, which we're getting no support from the state or the colleges. It's just, they keep inventing new programs and no money to support the districts as kids take those opportunities, which are great opportunities, don't get me wrong, but there's no help for us.
You have to do what is best for the student. They're the same high...
Yep.
Right? One student leave, refuse to... Leave, you still need the teachers, same, the class sizes. It's not an impact if you leave and you can now not have that class. You still have the same expense.
And I don't want to interrupt Amy, but she has been very key in our, leading our discussions on being prudent with our funds and what we do with our money. I mean, we heard tonight about music, but we didn't hear about this eight other staff members who teach English, math, and science at other buildings who, because of enrollment down at the high school, we were able to cut eight staff members there or reduce them for us. I don't like to say cut. You just, if you don't have the students, you don't, and all eight got placed somewhere else, thank goodness, except for a couple who didn't have their certification. But, you know, we heard about band tonight, but nobody's here to talk about the English, the math, and the science cuts that occurred, which are also important to our kids.
To rightsizing to our needs. If this renewal doesn't happen, we will have cuts. That's, I think, the difference.
True.
We're now finding efficiencies to drastic cuts that we would need to make about.
And it leads to the promise where we said we would start all-day kindergarten, so we're trying to lay the groundwork for that for 10 to 12 hires, to start August 2018. Think of the advantage our kids will get then. They're not going to preschool, most of them, but now they get a full day of kindergarten instead of two and a half hours. So just what it adds to our district as we move forward is just advantageous, so...
Thanks, Amy.
Here it goes. All right. The next item is a general business item.
We got to vote on that.
Yeah. We have to vote on it.
Let me go back, I'm too fast.
The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the May five-year forecast and assumptions as discussed as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any other questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a general business item. It's an action item. It is a resolution for bus purchase through Southwest Ohio Education Educational Purchasing Council. It is for the ability to purchase 10 buses, similar to what we did last year. This takes out the bidding aspect because it is state-term pricing. We get a very good deal for this, and it allows us to put 10 more buses on the road because we have a group of about 24 to 30, Chris, that are 290 to 225,000 miles and way up there in age, 99, 98, 20...well, Bob could probably tell you better than me, but it is what it is.
Well, it started back when I walked through the doors in 1998. We had just passed the Permanent Improvement Fund, and they purchased 28 buses in 1998. And previous to that, they had received 13 buses from the state in 1991. So when the 91s came up for replacement, there was no funds available. We were going through recession. There was, we were buying one bus, maybe two buses a year, and you need to buy six buses to sustain the fleet per year. So we went out and found some used buses. At the time, Mason was on a 10-year plan, and they just replaced their buses after 10 years, no matter what. So one year we bought six, and one year we bought seven, so, and guess what year they were? 1997s and 1998s, which is exactly what we bought 28 of, so now we own 42 of them. So some of those are still in the fleet from 1998. Think about it, they're all 18 years old.
With the last three years in the plan, Chris, has to get, we're getting caught up, so 10 last year, 10 this year. It's starting to get us where we need to be.
Well, 10 the year before. This is the third year, third year of a 10-year per year. I think, Amy, we're on six a year after that.
Yeah, with this purchase, it does put us on the six per year, and it, you can even see this, the schedule rollover, and it sustains the six after that going forward. So as long as we fund it, we will keep our bus schedule on track.
That's great that we put this together because one thing that's also happening simultaneously is costs for buses are going exponentially through the roof as they put more safety equipment on it. And, you know, you still, you know, they have more exit, exit in the ceiling and, you know, things like that as we really try to improve some of the safety features.
Yeah.
They're mandated.
Well, the costs, the costs of the buses actually were driven up by the EPA.
That too.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good thing. I mean, there were, I mean, the difference between what was out there and what's out there now is a huge difference on emissions, and it's definitely a plus to the community and to the industry, but...
My wife will tell you, she can guess the age of the bus when she's behind it, just by my own smell.
Yeah. And it's actually, there's probably about $13,000 per bus difference in emission controls on a bus today to what it was seven, eight years ago. That's where the cost is at in that engine.
So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution and accept the Rush Bus Center of Ohio EPC bus bid for 10 buses as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved, and everyone's second. Any questions? Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a general business item, info action. All donations have to be approved. I would like to give a big thank you to Colrain Elementary PTA for purchasing and donating 10 new Chromebooks to Colrain Elementary.
It says Colrain Middle here.
Oh, Colrain Middle, my bad. That was my typo. Colrain Middle School PTA, they do a lot for our schools, and this can be used for classrooms for kids to be pulled out in small groups, so it's just very beneficial for the district. So we truly appreciate it of all our PTAs. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept a donation to the Northwest Local School District as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any other comments? Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero.
The next category is certificated licensed personnel action items. It is the approval of five initial appointments, one approval of auxiliary tutor, 10 approval of extra duty contracts, and a resolution to hire non-licensed coaches. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or comments? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a classified personnel action item. You will find six approval of classified substitute to be paid at various rates, eight approval of summer custodial slash maintenance workers, five approval of classified leave of absence, one approval of change in status. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a curric- Next item is curriculum and instruction. It is an out-of-state and extended field trip request. The Colrain High School Music Department is requesting permission to take 115 students to Bellevue, Kentucky on October 8, 2016, to participate in a competition. No school will be missed by the students. Colrain High School Music Department is requesting permission to take 115 students to Indianapolis, Indiana, from November 10 to November 12 to participate in a competition. The students will miss two days of school and be required to make up missed work. The Colrain High School Music Department is requesting permission to take 175 students to the Walt Disney Park in Orlando, Florida, from March 29, 2017, to April 3, 2017. The students will miss two days of school and be required to make up missed work. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state and extended field trip request as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is a student service item. It is a revised event worker timesheet for 2016, 2017 school year. Added three additional middle school track positions to the timesheet. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the revised event worker timesheet as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
Todd, the, just looking at the football, we had put the new message board operator on there, and I'm not sure if I see that on there for this year.
Jack, my understanding is it's already on there. It was approved for this fall, right? Yeah, so it wouldn't be for the middle school, it'd be for the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
High school.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Motion passes five to zero.
All right. I'd like to talk about a few hot topics that are coming across my desk. The first one, and I know we've already had some discussions, but I know Amy and Stephanie and Chris have put a lot of work into this, and that's our federal regulations and the Fair Labor Standard Act, and you are now required to keep track of your time spent during your supplemental. We instituted time clocks plus, which our secretaries have adapted to. They did a great job of piloting it here. It will now move out to the buildings for the summer, but it is a way to make sure that, one, our employees are being paid for what they work for, make sure that we are not abusing them according to pay or time that they stay. We are running into just assorted issues where we have some folks who like to get to work early, and they like to stay wait, stay late, but it's now to the point where when it gets their quitting time at 4 o'clock, we need to say, it's time for you to go home. So we have some morale concerns. I think overall, it's gone pretty well. We're still battling some things. You've got high school secretaries who have a lot of ownership for graduations. They like to go up there on graduation night, but really, that's overtime if they're up there working at graduation night. So we are going to have to work with our principals on how to manage that, trade off some other time prior. Obviously, you need schedules to be handed out at open house and conference night. If they have to stay, that's overtime, which they're really not allowed to do. So we are rethinking how we do things. The other thing that it affects is our coaches. If you're a salaried employee, which means you're paid as a teacher or a head coach, then your hours are unlimited. Go for it. But if you're somebody who works for the post office, or somebody who works for Rumpke, or somebody who works down at the mill, and you come and you're paid a stipend of $2,500 to work, you have to divide that $25 by $8.10, and that tells you how many hours you're allowed to work. What that runs into is some of our football coaches will be done after game six, unless things change. I think you know how two-a-days go, and let's talk about supplementals for band, assistant band directors also, if they're not a salaried employee, they only have so many hours to work with. A two-a-day, when it starts August 1, hitting the door and running, you're going to get there at 7:30 in the morning and probably leave about 5 or 6 at night, so you can see how many hours they're using up there. So when that stipend is used up, by law, we need them to go and to cease and exist from coaching. So we're looking at several things that we need to increase our supplementals, trying to think outside the box, give head coaches a budget, let them disperse the money how we see fit to make sure we have these employees. But, you know, it's something we have to do. Other school districts have decided not to follow it, but I think there's been some lawsuits where the, an employee gets mad, takes them to court, and then there's back pay for all those days that they did overtime for. So it's better to be out in front of it than be behind of it. But if you hear morale issues with some classified staff and just not understanding it, it's just trying to get them to understand. One lady liked to show up at 7 o'clock and maybe start work at 7:15. Well, you really can't clog in, clock in until 7 minutes before 7:30 because that's your starting time. If you clock in earlier than that, that means you're working, we have to pay overtime. Vice versa, when they leave and go out, they have to clock out for lunch. So it's a morale thing, but it's what the law is. And so we're trying to get them to understand, we're just following the law. We appreciate you, we love the extra time and effort you put in, but the law is the law. You can only work so many hours a week. It's the Fair Labor Standard Act, it is what it is, we have to abide by it. Stephanie, Amy, anything else you guys want to add, or?
We're just working through it.
So then, in light of what we discussed tonight, we have, we need somebody to do the show choir at Colrain. So if they're not a teacher, you've got to take that and divide, because I could tell you from having three daughters and show cards, during competition season, you're at school at 5:00 AM, and you might not get home till 2:00 AM. So that might shoot through one competition. So we really need a teacher to take this over for so many reasons.
It's a learning experience as we go. We're all working together. We're doing paper timesheets for our coaches, so they should be able to put down their hours and work accordingly. Volunteers can do as much as they want.
So, yeah. Is this, is this how you do the Affordable Care Act and keeping track of hours for everybody, or is this a, like a different?
A little bit of both.
A little bit of both.
It's Fair Labor Standards Act, which requires you to pay at least minimum wage to someone who is not salaried, and if your, teachers are exempt, so they're salaried automatically. But if it's our non-teaching coaches and advisors, who are being paid hourly, but also for Affordable Care Act, if they do average 30 hours a week throughout the year, we do have to offer them benefits. With it being seasonal, I think we're all right with, in that regard, it would be those individuals who work more than one season, those are the ones we would have to look at. So it's both, but mainly this is just tracking to make sure that we improve that we're paying them at least minimum wage for the hours that they're staying they work.
Amy, I've got a question for you, and the, and I've been asked this so many times, and I've not been able to give a good answer. Todd and I once were, recently were talking about down in Texas where, like, football coaches are just paid to coach football, and they're making six figures. What would be the low end for, like, let's say, a seventh-grade volleyball or basketball coach versus the highest-paid coach in our district? People have asked me that, and I've given different answers, and I'm not sure I've given the right thing. And I know it's gross, they're grossly underpaid, but could you give us some feedback on that?
Low end as far as the salary schedule, this, by steps or just by?
Just on average. Well, like?
Might need some help from Jack on this one.
I can tell you, middle school volleyball's somewhere in the 795 range, 795, that's an area we're looking at right now. Your highest coach is probably around the $6,000 range, which is obviously a high school varsity end coach.
Okay.
That's, I'm estimating the range, but I've been into that a lot lately, so middle school volleyball's around 795. Current, current high school, basketball, etc.
Yeah, when you think of the year-round nature, when I was in high school, the sports were not year-round. They, I mean, it's just nothing like it is today, and, I mean, when you start hearing about these other states, I don't want to get into a, like, a college competition where, you know, we've got college coaches making five, six million. I don't want it to be where we just hire people to coach, but at 795, to give up a lot of that time or a person's time for two, three months after school is, that's, that's not very much money. Thank you.
And the main thing is, I just want to put it out there so you're in front of it in case you would get questions about it and why we're required to do it, so.
Is there any provisions taken for, like, key times of the year, like startups and stuff like that? There's nothing?
Not as of this date, no.
Is this something, one of, one of things you're going to have to work through, or?
Yeah, we're just going to have to be thinking outside the box. Can, can a parent come in and just pass out a schedule that says John Doe, room, boom, 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 boom? Nothing personal on it, no information, no address, none of that. We're just going to have to think, how can we do things differently? Open house is key. The parents have no idea where to go. They need a schedule.
Can we utilize our students, particularly our seniors, that are required to get their community service?
I would think at the high schools they could. It just depends on, we can't have personal information out there because that, so some of the things not, but like, the high school graduation, there's plenty of assistance and the principal at the high schools to do what they need to do. The problem is, you have Trudy and Heather who love to do it, so they like to be up there. It's just getting them to understand, we need you to do what you need to do, but it has to be on their own time, so.
Even if they want to do it at a volunteer basis?
If they're volunteer, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but they can't volunteer to do what is part of their job. Now, if Trudy is?
So part of Trudy's job is being up at graduation?
Getting the graduation program together, organizing it, arranging it, putting Chrislin's book together, just like Heather. So, yeah, it's a big part of it. The next hot topic is the transgender topic, and I don't have much to report on this, but I've had some emails where people are lashing out. I'm not voting for any levy if Northwest supports this. So I just want to put it out there in front of everybody so we know what's going on. The federal government issued a strong pronouncement of all public schools transgender student rights. The pronouncement does not take any new policy positions, and no new laws or regulations have been created. The joint statement is, however, unequivocal in its support of transgender student rights, including the full right to restroom access according to students' self-determining gender identity. And the state of North Carolina is the biggest one. There's a lawsuit currently there. They're enmeshed in litigation over transgender rights. There are statements of policies such as dear colleague letters that have led, that do not have the force of the law, but are important in that they clarify the position of the enforcing agency, which will take until the courts have established. So what they're trying to say is, it's out there, it's not being enforced yet, but until the court takes it and interprets what they're trying to say through our president and his current Congress and Senate, it's just there. Nobody's being made to enforce it or do anything about it at this time. So we're not making decisions to upset parents. We have transgender students in our district. As far as I know, they all are very successful. There are issues that pop up now and then, but when it comes to the decision of transgender restrooms and what they use, our attorneys are advising, let it play out in courts. Let's see what happens there first, then policy and law will go into place, then school districts will have guidance on which way to go with it. So until that time, his suggestion was, don't be the test case like North Carolina.
Todd, what's the timeframe for the court? I mean, we're talking years? They would actually, they would need somebody to bring a cost of action first.
Yeah. It's going to take a couple lawsuits and finalization. So I just want the public to know, we're not making any decisions on this, we're not changing any policy on this. We are aware of students' needs, and we'll deal with them as we have to. The last thing is our board meeting calendar was wanting to check if we could move July 18 to July 25. It's from a Monday to a Monday. If that works for all you guys.
Turn my phone back on now.
The July 11 meeting, just as a reminder, is at 7:30 AM. It will be all personnel, and that's it. The July 25 will be a regular board meeting, and it's at 7:00 PM at night. And that's the calendar I sent out to you guys earlier in the air.
Do we need to approve a change of the district calendar?
Please.
Do we need to approve a change? Do we need to take a formal motion on that?
I just need to make sure you guys are good for it, and then we'll officially send out notification that there's a change.
I'm okay.
Okay.
July 25 and cancel the 18.
And I'll send a reminder out tomorrow morning. Bob, I heard it kick on.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, if you could keep your calendars open as much as possible, prior to the Colrain High School graduation, we might need to have a board meeting to cover a couple of things with the master facility plan, but I'll check on that and let you know. That would take us to our total of 24.
Okay, I will be back by the 20.
25th? Great. All right. We'll make the change, we'll get notification out.
11th is going to be in the morning.
11th will be 7:30 in the morning.
Okay. All right.
And Colrain's graduation is June 2.
And Northwest's graduation is the 31st.
31st.
Both at Mallett Hall, both at 7:30.
Isn't the Colrain one at 7?
Yeah, I thought Colrain was earlier this year, I think.
I'll check on that and let you know with my email.
Yeah.
I know you've got the Northwest one there in front of you that says 7:30.
Yeah, Colrain's is earlier.
And that's all I have.
At this time, we have community comments. I think we've lost the majority of our audience, but there's a few of you back there.
I just need a clarification on one, and a comment. Todd was very nice. He pulled me aside today and filled me in on what's going on at Strobel, which I most appreciate, he's been great about the whole process. The bridge, though, I'm still a little bit unclear, is the bridge dependent upon the study on the other?
Traffic? Or is the bridge going to be there in all of this? We, I'm going to let these guys answer. The traffic study really is the key, really is the key to everything.
Right.
And with them closing John Rose, it's created something that probably would not be an issue if it wasn't closed. The township did not do a traffic study for some reason, they didn't feel like they had to. You guys want to address the bridge?
I live on that street, that's what it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're going to the traffic impact study. Expect to be?
Yeah, turned around in the first part of July. It is expected that what that John Rose closing is going to cause, because you're around 450 now, and it's going to double to almost 900, so that's going to be a big issue, sort of moving students and buses all down through a single sort of avenue. So is it 100% certain? Not yet. We're getting there, we're working through it, it's definitely looking that way, and we want to make sure that we're playing for it, we want to make sure we're looking at everything on the table to make the best plan and options available to the table.
If you don't build a bridge, there still would be pedestrian access somewhere across that.
Hopefully, there will be both. I really, like you said, we're not 100% sure, but we're almost positive that bridge is going to be there.
That's all I need to know. And my comment is, I'm very enthused about the new schools, as are a lot of people. The emergency levy really gives me the heebie-jeebies, and I am convinced that the school levy recently passed because all five of you were united. It's going to be critical, critical for all five of you to be united to pass that emergency levy. So do what you did for the school levy, be united, present a united front, because that's the only way it's going to pass. Otherwise, there'll be questions going. So, my advice.
Thank you. Thank you. I actually have a quick question. Does the township have to help, and all pay for this traffic study?
At this time? At this time, they are not, but we will go into negotiations once that's concluded.
Can I make a comment? About a year and a half, the township did approach us, and they also approached that whole community, and did a, did a nice presentation, it's approval that was very well attended, and that is the same time they were tearing down those apartments that were blighted and causing a lot of issues. That's when they brought up the issue of closing John Rose. So they didn't do an official study, but they did a whole, an annual.
And then CMHA went in, and they sort of have, I don't want to use the legal term eminent domain, but they sort of have priorities, precedents, let's say, to do what they want to do.
Okay, any other community comments? Okay, board items, Chris?
I'm still working, Pam, on the WNSD. I got to take an hour and a half radio show from nineteen seventy-four down to about three minutes, unless you want to listen to the whole hour and a half. I found it interesting. It was my dad's stuff. He had recorded it, and I totally forgot it. Just hearing the news broadcasts and the Steely Dan, the Allman Brothers, all those old groups. So I'm going to try to put something together pretty nice in the next few weeks. It's just sitting down, taking the time. So it will be forthcoming, I promise.
Great. Michael?
I know we have a lot of athletes competing right now, or have competed in, you know, various levels, districts, regional sectionals going up through the, through the spring sports. And we have some people doing track here coming up too. But I wanted to, you know, congratulate Matt Lasky and Ricardo Cinca for their district tennis performance. And Ricardo's an exchange student, he's from Italy, and, you know, represented us well. They went to districts, they didn't make it past districts, but they represented us well. And this was Matt's second year in a row for going that far. So glad to see, glad to see our tennis program move along as well.
Great. Jim?
Just one thing. Wednesday night is the regional track meetup at Waltham Stadium in Dayton. And actually, Northwest's lung jumper is seeded number one, and Colrain's is seeded number two. So we have two really good athletes up there, and there's probably another fifteen kids who are going to be competing up there. So good luck to them, if you guys can come up.
Jim, they used to take four from the districts. Now they're only taking two?
No, they're taking four. No, they were just, the Colrain and Northwest kid were in the same district. So they qualified, and then two others.
Oh, okay, okay.
I want to say one from, maybe Wenton Woods, and one from, from our district.
Okay, so the top four in each event from the district go to the regionals?
Yes.
And then the top?
Four.
From the regionals?
At the regional, go to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
And the Northwest guy was district champ in all four of his events?
In all four events, Malik Beverly, and he just crushed it. So I think he's doing three events at the regional.
That's awesome. It'll be exciting Friday night.
Yeah.
Bob?
Well, the time clock issue was, was an issue that kind of struck home. Because I know a lot of the classified personnel, so I fielded quite a few phone calls from that. But, you know, like Todd says, we'll just have to adjust. I mean, it's something that we have to do. I don't think anybody wants to do it, it's just the fact of the matter that we got to stay ahead of this thing. So, but other than that, you know, I'm hoping that Colrain High School be receptive to the changes in the music department. Obviously, it's hard to accept change sometimes, but, you know, I think that we're not really affecting their funding, their ability to participate, so that's a good thing. And hopefully, the students will adjust, and parents, and the greatness of the Colrain High School Arts Department will continue to exceed.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I think, what is there, seven teaching days left, I believe?
Six, seven left, I know. This end of the year's pretty busy. I know our central office administrators try to hit all these end-of-the-year activities, and I don't know how they do all of it. I've been trying to keep up as best as possible. I know, I think it was last week, I got to attend and speak at the academic signing at Colrain High School, and also the military signing, which, that is always a very, very nice program. We had, I know Jim and I were at the Business Partners Breakfast. Pollard does a great job. We get to recognize all of our business partners for all of our schools. And then this Wednesday afternoon, we're going to recognize our twenty-five and thirty-year employees and our retirees at Wonderlic. So I will be there as well. So anyhow, with that, and hopefully, we'll have an exciting Friday night up in Dayton at the regionals track meet. I encourage everyone, I was glad the music people were here. I want them to know they're being heard. It was kind of ironic, we actually went forward in the board meeting and then approved three, what am I trying to say, three field trips for the music department for next year. So I think that shows that definitely all of us in this room are supportive of the arts, and we will work through this, and they'll be as successful as always. It's going to be a challenge, though. We've got to all put our heads together to find replacements for the parks, because that's not going to be an easy task. And then you add on this, what you just said about this time clock. I don't know how we're going to do that, but anyhow, we'll figure it out. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything else? Okay, Chris? Yeah.
We can do it manually again?
I moved.
Remember to say aye.
I was going to say aye. Five to oh. Meeting's adjourned. I haven't ever noticed in all these years that crews on it, and I didn't touch anything.
I, and it's weird. I noticed it because I would get ahead of the man.